Purchase water included and all of our own type of tree. Under that new revised MCL by the EPA, we have five years to install treatment. So that's why we are currently in the design phases at our four largest wells to get that treatment installed.
And the treatment's active filtering of?
So treatment for perfluorinated compounds, you can either use an ion exchange or or carbon.
Okay.
Uh, so we've done a feasibility study, um, which we should be getting the results of, I would say, within the next couple of weeks. Uh, where they analyze to see which of those two treatments work better for each of our treatment plants. We, because of the production from those four largest wells, uh, we will be using carbon filtration. Um, so we've proceeded with the design of those treatment facilities.
And also more capacity but from a different angle, the, uh, I noticed when we had the severe drought last year and even droughts before that, a lot of the surrounding towns put down water restrictions, but we somehow never really need it. Do they, are these wells really well performing in drought conditions then?
So knock on, knock on wood, we are lucky with our wells, they are well performing. Uh, and last year, actually, because of some maintenance that was going on at our surface water treatment plant, we, but throughout the summer, our surface water treatment plant was not in service, so we didn't touch our reservoir. So the reservoir was overflowing come the fall, most utilities were struggling.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you. Great presentation. It's interesting to hear. Just a couple of questions, forgive me if they sound naive. Um, how do you decide where you drill the wells? Like when you need to drill a new well, how do you decide where Morris Plains to drill?
So we're bringing in experts, uh, in groundwater to kind of direct us where we should be working.
Okay, and I guess they have a way to find out where.
Yeah, the hydrogeologists look at all the, the aquifer maps for the state and then they kind of direct us where we should drill.
Okay, interesting. I have a, a friend that runs a well company and he's always, you know, told me stories that go right over my head, so it's interesting to connect a little bit. And then I must ask, so every month, my wife reminds me to put salt in our water softener because of the hard water. Is there a reason, you had mentioned like in this area specifically, it seems to be there's more hard water than other areas, is that?
The formation of the aquifers. So it just picks up naturally calcium, magnesium from the, from the aquifer.
Okay.
That's what causes the hardness. But as I said, we're gonna be adding treatment for PFAS at all of our sources. And as part of that, to improve the bed life capacity of the carbon, we're gonna treat for the hardness as well. So we will be receiving softer water once those treatment facilities are installed.
Interesting. Okay, that's cool. Yeah, I'll, I'll check in with, uh, my wife and see, you know, what she says.
Give them that answer.
No, but it's, it was interesting because, um, yeah, I always wondered about the hard water, why certain areas have it over others when some do and some don't. So, yeah, well answered. Thank you.
Hi, thank you again for being here. And it sounds like the Styles project is going very smoothly. I know we had a rough start with the Glenbrook, so we'd like to hear if you haven't heard from a lot of residents, um, about the Styles project, so that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, it's been.
No, it is a good thing.
Yeah, and I would say the info session that we held prior to the kickoff of Styles project has helped a lot. And we're planning on implementing that on all of our projects now. Next week, I actually have a presentation in Morris Township, uh, before we start the Hard Road project, so.
Great, that's a, that's a great information. So thanks for doing that. Uh, so I have questions about your redundancy plans. It sounds like you have a lot of different water sources. So I'm sure you have all the emergency plans in place if something should fail or something should have contamination or something like that. Right, you, you have a whole, I'm sure you can't talk about it, but.
Yeah, we do have a lot of resiliency in our system. Having the ten different wells definitely serves us well, the purchased water supplies help. Uh, another key capital improvement that we made, uh, last year, we purchased a portable diesel-powered pump. So that if there's ever a power failure at one of the booster stations that move water between the gradients, uh, we can pull that pump, the mobile pump station up in front of the, the booster facility, connect to two hydrants, one in each of the pressure gradients, and transfer water from one gradient to the other. So.
Interesting. So you said that the water pressure in Morris Plains is established over the Route fifty-three tank?
Yes.
One point five million gallons?
It's a one million gallon tank with an overflow at five hundred and sixty-eight feet above sea level.
So regardless of where you're getting the water, sourcing it, it's going there, so that it can create the pressure that we need?
It goes there, uh, doesn't necessarily come all from there. So the predominant source right now from Morris Plains, as I said, was, is our Malapartis booster. Uh, depending upon what wells are in service at any given time, uh, can vary what source Morris Plains receives. Because of the location and the volume produced from our largest well, our wing well on Bridge Village, uh, the majority of water in Morris Plains comes from that well.
And I kind of want to echo what Mike said about, it kind of drove me crazy last year when I knew we were in a drought and, you know, the sprinklers were going and, you know, and this was like in October, like the grass was gonna die in a month anyway.
She was calling me too.
I was keeping an eye on our well level. Our, our well levels maintained fine throughout the drought and, as I said, our surface water reservoir we didn't even touch.
But also, I mean, as a homeowner here, the water bills add up and you have your sprinkler running in a drought every, you know, other day. So, you know, I, I've been encouraging my husband to like, oh, let's look into the rain barrels and the rain gardens and all the other, well, the rain gardens help, I guess, the water supply, right? More than it does the homeowner.
Right.
Uh, but the rain barrel idea, so does your, do you offer any kind of incentives or any kind of like information for people who want to look into these other water conservation efforts or anything?
So right now, the only, I would say, thing that we offer is based upon the rate of consumption, you pay a lower rate if you use less water.
Oh, interesting. Is that on your website?
Uh, it's on our tariff, which is located on our website.
Tariff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's in the business of selling?
I know, I know, but, I mean, it's a resource, uh, you know, we have to make sure we have enough for the future generations.
We're making it funny here.
Do the wells ever get contaminated with salt from the roadway?
So yes, over the years, we've seen, uh, the chloride and, and sodium levels increasing slowly in, in our wells. And, uh, as far as s- salt, sodium is, uh, considered secondary contaminant, it's not harmful for you for the normal person if they're not on a sodium rich diet. Um, so New Jersey has a recommended upper limit of fifty milligrams per liter and several of our sources do exceed that fifty milligrams per liter.
Tyler doesn't buy much salt. Um, would they abandon a well because of that or no?
No, not for the, the wells that we're seeing. And if anything, if, if needed, you probably do a treatment, rather than take a well out of service for salt.
One who makes the laws, the worst offender of that in the state, you know.
Um, I'm a volunteer firefighter here and I joined twenty-eight years ago. One of our members was an engineer and he designed, it was a map of Morris Plains with different lights. So when you got a call in the middle of the night, it hit whatever street it was on, it showed you the location of the hydrants, Eddie Goodest. So I'm pretty happy and excited to hear that you guys have, uh, the technology to even give the location, but let alone that, but the, uh, pressure that comes out.
Pressure is slow, yeah.
We've, I fought a few house fires and then you hit a hydrant and there's not enough pressure to draft from, or get from the hydrant to, to the engine, the pump, to the ladder. And, uh, it was always kind of frustrating, so that's good. And one of your, uh, former employees, uh, was on the voluntary fire department. So you'd like hit this, you knew where all mains were, we hit the hydrant on the different streets, so it's, I like, I love technology and that's, you know, benefit fighting fires in the future. Um, and that's accessible to?
It'll be accessible to all the fire departments to use.
It's on your website or do they have to get an app or just?
So it's, it's, we're going to give them the link for the website and the password and, and walk them through how to, how to use the tool.
Thanks, we have, uh, tablets in our engines and trucks. So we log on, the counter knows we're on scene and so forth, so I'm sure it could, that's the right word, maintain that or talk to each other. Yeah, that's all I know, thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Very, very impressive. You did all that from memory. I was very impressed. It was, uh, quite the presentation. Um, so, uh, I was actually, I'm, I'm a resident in Glenbrook, so I was one of the first ones, you may have joined a Zoom call early on and
Yeah.
I was on, other residents are on it. And, um, you know, I do appreciate the feedback you took from that. I did actually go to the info session that you did for Styles. I thought it was, uh, you know, just great. You did, you, you learned the lesson, right? And then, uh, you applied that to the next project, which is great. Um, so I appreciate that. Uh, just a, um, uh, so you said you, you, you're looking to replace two and a half miles of main per year, is that right?
Between two and a half and three and a half miles.
Okay, and you have a total of four hundred and sixty miles, is that right?
Three hundred and eighty.
Three hundred and eighty, okay. So to date of that three hundred and eighty, how, how much of that have you replaced already? Do you know?
So it's a rolling.
Okay.
Thing.
But they last how long? Hundred and fifty years?
Hundred and fifty years is our target, yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's rolling, but like how much have you done, I don't know, over the last ten years or so, you know?
I don't have that figured, but I'll, I'll give you my business card and shoot you an email and I'll, I'll figure it out.
I was just curious.
Thirty miles, it's, what's that? Thirty miles.
Thirty miles, good enough. That's great, that's great. Um, so just a question on, uh, the wells, right? So you said you were, um, I guess you had done a well over at, uh, uh, Simon's Park, but then it, it wasn't good?
Didn't produce as much as we had hoped for.
Okay, so when you do drill new wells, what does that look like to the residents, the impact, are we gonna see anything? Is it, you know, this thing sticks up out of the ground or what, what does that look like if, if a new well comes up?
You'll see probably a, a week or so of the, uh, the drilling rig out there. But as far as the water that you're receiving, there's no impact.
Okay, and when, when you're all done drilling, right, is it just like a manhole cover or something that's there or what is it, what is that?
So for the short interim period, yeah, it would, it would look kind of like a manhole cover and then we would construct a wellhouse around that.
Okay.
So kind of like what you see at Simon's Park now.
That's the old wellhouse.
Okay.
So it could either go in that one or depending on where they moved it to, they'd have to construct one.
Got you, okay, so it is.
That's the abandoned one that they're gonna.
Right, so it is, so it is a structure of some sort.
Small structure.
Okay, so there's, not that this would ever happen, but there's no danger of somebody walking into that thing and falling down.
No.
Got it, okay, understood. Um, uh, that's it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, so I, I think everybody learned a little something, but it's certainly good to put a, a face to a name now. And I just have to tell you, uh, you know, we all know Glenbrook was, uh, not so good, right, of a project. A great project, but how it was implemented, but that was quick, it was, but everybody learned. But just the, uh, the responsiveness that yourself and Sophia have given myself and, and the residents. You give out your, your number and they call you directly. Who else could, what other executive director gives out the, their, their number for residents to call? So I really have to commend you on that, but, uh, it's, it's been a pleasure working with you. And you've only been director now for how long?
Uh.
Or do you even want to remember?
I guarantee it.
Yeah, so I think.
People listen to it.
You've really stepped in, into these shoes and, and you've done a terrific job. I know it's a learning as you go kind of thing for some of this, but, uh, I think you've really, you've stepped it up here and I think the residents have been happy, uh, with the, with the service, uh, what's going on with the, with the projects and how they're progressing and, and again, the responsiveness. So, uh, thank you very much, you and Sophia and then the rest of your team. You have your attorney here, Dave.
Yes.
We didn't have to open his mouth, so that was good. But no, Drew, I really appreciate you coming out here and just giving an overview. It was part of our best practices and, uh, just, it's good to hear from you, the responsiveness.
Thank you, appreciate it, Dave, and the opportunity for coming and speaking.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jumped right into the hot seat.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Excellent.
Is that good, Dave?
Great, man.
Arthur's is still open, so. Drew's hun- Drew's hungry.
Don't, don't put salt on steak, boy.
Does anybody from the audience have any questions while they're here? I'm sorry.
Oh, I just would like to know, because of like all the affordable housing that the state has mandated, does the state ever ask the water company to say like, oh, could you really handle this? A man?
So, uh, the developers that are, before they plan, uh, their development, they have to come to us and ask for the allocation. And then they tell us how many units they're looking to install, what type of units, and that all goes into the calculations against, uh, again, our peak, uh, production day and what we already have set aside for developments that we know about.
But the state doesn't ask?
Well, that, that, that gets reported to the state annually because we have a master permit.
Yeah, but when the state says, okay, Morris Plains needs this much affordable housing, the state has not come to you and said, like, asked if, if there's enough water for that.
So they don't, they don't directly come to us and ask if we have the water, but we do, every quarter have to report our allocation, what we've produced, um, every, every quarter to the DEP. So the, the state, I guess, through the DEP, if they're communicating with each other, have, have that information.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Just curious, I, I think this is really interesting. You mentioned that one of the, one of the wells was overflowing back in November when everybody else was in drought. Is there an opportunity to sell that water, so Morris Plains would get it, residents would get a discount?
So it wasn't the well, it was our surface water reservoir.
Okay.
And, and no, we can't sell that water because we actually have a required note that has to bypass that reservoir that makes its way to the Whippany River, eventually to the Rockaway River, to, to say, now a work mission that sells it back to us, so.
So the water that comes into our system?
You're paying for it twice.
So go, so the water that comes through our system gets sold back to us?
The raw untreated water passes through our system and, and yes, eventually does make its way back to us.
Sold back to us.
Funny how the world goes round, huh?
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
I'll leave some cards here and give them to the owner.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Um, so I just have one more thing for, uh, for this conference session is, uh, Davenport Village is going to be applying for the CDBG grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, in which they will be contributing twenty-eight thousand dollars for the, uh, installation of a new sprinkler system over at the two sixty take. But they probably won't, if they get it wrong, they won't be seeing the money until twenty twenty-six, but just so you're aware that, that, I've signed their application and, uh, once they get it corrected, then, uh, I'll be off to work, so. Sal, do you have anything for open?
No.
Just a quick inquiry sort of. I had a resident, um, on Franklin reach out to me. Um, they were a little concerned, just saying that like it seems recently there's been a little bit more, um, like after the garbage, people come, I guess, like kind of garbageing up behind Arthur's. Um, is that like, is there something I can do?
So the road department is back there regularly, uh, picking up, um, uh, but I've noticed all over town, people put their recyclers out. I don't know whether this stands true there, but it's been very limited, so the night before, people have been putting their stuff out. Uh, so I've been asking Johnny to go more frequently to, uh, to pick up, but he is back there often. Um, I don't exactly know how many times a week, but they're back there often, but, uh, you can certainly, uh, talk to him and ask him.
Yeah, I was just curious if, you know, I said I'd bring it up and throw in help and step up if needed, so, thank you, yeah, that helps. I'll, I'll circle back and see what we can do there. That's it, though?
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, thank you.
So I wanted to ask the council to evaluate a possible resolution on energy tax receipts to go to the state. The taxes on gas and electric utilities were originally collected by municipalities to be used for local purposes and compensate the public for the use of their right of way, you know, our coal and things like that. Um, but the state made itself the collection agent for those and promised to dedicate the proceeds to our local budgets back to us. And, uh, that hasn't quite happened, so, um, but this year we did not get a certain, they call it municipal real aid, municipal, is that what they call municipal relief?
Yeah, but it's really our money.
It's our money.
They're acting like it's, they're giving it to us.
And they're using it to plug holes in the, in the state budget. So the League of Municipalities is asking municipalities to pass a resolution encouraging the state, uh, assembly and the governor to return that money back to the municipalities where it belongs. So I'll circulate the, the draft and you guys can take over that.
Just on that, I certainly have no problem doing it. We've, we've done it several times in the past. This comes up almost every year down at the League of Municipalities to everybody. Uh, we did get some in, in years, but not because of, uh, the resolution or anything like that. But it's certainly, uh, uh, something that the municipality should be getting. And whether this does any good or not, I don't know, it can't hurt, but, uh, it's just frustrating that they're using our funds to plug their holes.
Yeah.
And we're, we're stuck with it.
Just want to use our voice where we can.
Yep.
Um, also, you'll see on the consent agenda that the borough clerk, Roseanne, has given her six-month notice as required by our personnel manual. So her retirement will be effective at October first. Um, and the finance committee, because of vacations, has not had a chance to meet to discuss filling the position. So we will be meeting on that and then reporting back to you. Um, also, I want to let you know, finance, that, uh, Mayor Carr and Anna, our CFO, and I are meeting with two different insurance brokers to see about how we can save money on our state health benefits plan. That provides our employees' health coverage. So we have, we have one meeting next week, uh, on May seventh at three thirty, if anyone from my committee wants to join. And May nineteenth at four P M. with another broker, if anyone in finance will join us. And then, um, yeah, that's it.
Boris? So last year, we got, um, through the beautification committee, they had requested goats to come over and eat some poison ivy and Japanese knotwood and some other weeds that I forget. And, uh, it was pretty successful. Uh, it was exciting, it was different. We didn't use chemicals to control weeds or water, so they're asking again, so I just wanted to see what the, our, our, my committee was all agreeable. Bill actually has pictures and videos from last year, said he might be the biggest goat fan out there.
Love to go.
So I just, what about the other, our council members thought, it's something, it's the same cause.
Where is it going, where is it going?
Let's ask the chief, what he thinks about it.
Ask somebody off the.
Why was it got hurt?
You can take one.
Where, where is it going? Then a few times, it's okay.
They wanted to come home with you.
The, uh, they recommend, uh, three years in the same locations, over, again, over a community park.
In the same spot?
I didn't have specific.
So I walked down there today and I'm gonna report back on the poison ivy vines are growing up those big trees that line the roadway. Like, they're like thicker than my, like they're big poison ivy vines.
Yeah, but that's on the other side of the road, right?
No, it's on the side where they were last, last year. So they're, they're growing back up and this is the time when we're gonna go up that tree, they're gonna eventually kill those trees. Um, not to mention that the kids are walking through there with flip flops on the way back and forth to the pool at camp, right? And all that baby poison ivy is in the grass, so, yeah, it's, I'm in favor of doing something about it and I'm, I'm in favor of poison, so.
But I, I, that's what my committee was, my committee was in progress, I just see what the other members thought.
Just make sure that we have that, uh, the fencing and some of those other added things that we had, the adjustments that we had to make last year was, uh,
Irish Shepherd?
Over with the, with the chief and, uh, who else was involved with that, I forget, maybe Johnny or somebody and, uh, but they gotta be a little bit better. We need to add some snow fencing around the electric fencing to avoid any potential, yeah, jokes.
Sogage.
Yeah, some signage, some snow fencing, so, yeah.
Mike, you good?
I'm good. It's still, it's only a temporary.
Yeah, a couple, probably.
No, no, I mean that the, the weeds come back.
Yeah.
We need, we need uprooting goats.
I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm not a goat expert, but they supposedly want to.
I am sure there is no other council in this state that's talking about goats.
The only other thing, um, I know I shot out an email, I think Mike replied, uh, the, uh, beautification committee was also concerned about dog waste in our parks. There is signage for no dogs in Simon's Park, uh, Robert's Garden, but they were saying, well, since people aren't gonna be walking in, maybe we put up some dog waste, um, dispensary units where the dog, and, you know, that was a good comment that maybe we're encouraging people to walk in.
You didn't, yeah. No.
But it was, it was good feedback. I'm saying, I'm trying to prevent the dog waste, because dog waste will pollute our rivers and waterways and stuff, so I'm not sure what the right answer is. I know we do have waste dog bags, uh.
Yeah, it's certain places and certain parks are no dogs or no pets allowed, um, you know, is that gonna create, they're gonna put it in a bag, throw it in a bag, are they gonna take the bag? If they don't do it now, are they gonna do it? I, I, there's a lot of question, right?
Yeah, I know, so.
Are you encouraging people to, to go into parks where they're not supposed to be going into parks as well?
Sure we've all seen dogs at Simon's Park and even at the school grounds.
Yeah, but, uh.
I mean, you just said, yeah.
It's something else, I, I, I'm just, you know, it's something else that the DPW will have to do, not, they can't, but if the bag, if it's empty or something, too empty out, you know, so.
Yeah, so do waters or provide banks.
I think you guys should talk about it, uh, uh, and, uh, go back to the council.
I don't understand why people can't take care of the dogs.
All right, I chased a dog and a fidgety with an owner from the turf field once.
Oh, did they?
Get out.
I see them there playing soccer and, uh.
Get together and take up the consensus.
So I have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple things for council, uh, for our conference here. Um, so, uh, at, at your request, um, I, you asked to, uh, put together a committee for the tech upgrades that I was considering?
Yep.
Um, we haven't had a chance to talk about it yet, but, um, I did. Okay, well, I, I did reach out to a few people that I thought would be good and just curious your thoughts on it, so.
We can sit down and talk about that.
Okay, well, for example, um, you know, Paul Sobrowski was one of them. Um, Roseanne, because of her knowledge here in this, uh, you know, with the system that's here. Um, then another gentleman, Eric Hendricks. Um, both Paul and Eric are professionals in town, um, and they, they do broadcasting professionally. So, um, I thought it'd be good as an initial committee, but, you know, looking forward to sitting down and talking about it and see what your thoughts are on it, so. Okay, great, thank you. Um, let's see, uh, you asked last time about the, the lead paint. Um, I did send you over some information about it. Do you have a chance to read through that?
Yeah, I did. There was only one quote there and we've got to get a couple others.
So just a question, if, if, um.
Anything that exceeds a thousand dollars, uh, we have that we, we should get quotes.
Okay, even if the borough isn't paying for that, because we wouldn't be paying that service?
Um, that's a question that, uh, the borough's not paying for it, I don't, I don't think it needs three quotes. And it's only if you guys expect the public lines. But we do have, uh, there should be an administrative fee.
Right.
Tacked on to that too, but you have to make that.
It did, somebody, there's, there's something is there. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a nominal fee. It's like, uh, twenty-five, thirty dollars or something to process the allocations.
Yeah, I have no problem moving forward with that, if that's all that we need, but he's got, we have to have some sort of agreement with him.
Okay, so.
This is all gonna work.
Okay, so I have all the info. I got the email from the gentleman, I spoke to him, uh, last week, um, I sent you the info, but, um.
Is there anything else to compare it to though, or, I mean, is it just one person? I mean, it seemed okay, I don't know what other, what other people do or, um, or, uh, offer, right?
Yeah, when I, when I talked to him, when I did some research, right, he, his, his prices are right in line with everybody else's. Um, you know, we can, we can get some other figures if, you know, if that would interest you, but I, I think that, you know.
I think it's always best to kind of just get a consensus maybe of maybe different services. I don't have a problem with what this guy's doing if, if people are not doing it in one person.
Again, it's, it's a service, right, that, that we need, um, I guess, just to kind of back up, right? It's for the, um, apartments that are being rented and turned over, um, at the evening, uh, prior to nineteen seventy-eight, right? So they need to be inspected. Um, and, you know, so it's a, obviously it's a secret thing in, in the town, which we're all in favor of. Um, but, uh, you know, I'm, I'm happy to go out to, to find other people if you, if you like, but, and that's.
That's up to you guys really, if you want. I would suggest it just to see whether this person is in line, like, it's okay if you, if you don't, if you're comfortable with this person, that's.
Okay, I mean, he was, um, just to, for the rest of the council to understand, so that the fees that, um, that he's charging is roughly, so again, this is to do a lead inspection, right, for a lead paint inspection, uh, for, for any house, or, sorry, any apartment, um, that gets, that gets, uh, has renters in it. Um, and when they, um, if it's built before nineteen seventy-eight, right, which is when that existed, um, in the paint, um, they have to, they do that when, when it turns over. Um, it's a new turn of state compliance thing that we have to do. Um, this, this gentleman is charging, his rates are roughly two hundred and fifty dollars a house, um, two hundred dollars a condo or townhome. And then for a two-family, is, uh, uh, it's split two fifty and then one fifty for the second, second family.
So we have about sixty units?
Uh, I think it's less than that, thirty-three, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then, so this would, so this would be, um, something that's discussed with the landlord, right? Yeah, yeah, and then, so this would, so this would be, um, something that's discussed with the landlord, right? Um, and then.
He takes over everything though. He does everything.
He does everything. The only thing that we would have to do, because when the state comes looking at it, the state's not going to hand it. The state's coming back to municipal. So we would have to file it, right, so we would be able to charge a, um, administration fee to do that. Uh, but then we file it, um, and then we, we register it all. So it's, uh, it's just something that, again, it's a state requirement that we need to do.
We collect the money and pay the state.
Right, correct, yep, yep, so, anyway, if there.
I thought, I didn't think that we'd collect any money, like.
Well, the administration.
Just the, not, not the fee for the inspection.
No.
Administration fee.
The administration's fee.
Yeah.
Right, we collect the administration fee, but then as far as the, the other fees, that, that's all handled between the resident or the landlord and the inspector.
He pays the state.
Correct, yeah, we don't have to get involved in any of that, so. Uh, but if the council's, you know, I can, I can forward the rest of the information over to you, um, for you guys to take a look at. Um, you know, again, it's something that we, that we need to do, so.
I'm familiar with it, just with.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be familiar with it. And then, from what you said, pricing sounds about like two, anywhere from like one fifty to two fifty a minute, so, sounds accurate.
Well, the rest of it, we'll get the information.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, that's what.
And then the last thing, I don't know if we wanna talk about the conference, but, um, just the, um, the, the fee or the salaries for the camp and the pool, are we discussing that now or do it later?
John, can we discuss it now?
If you'd like to discuss it, I can discuss it.
Okay, so, I think, um, Sal, I did see what you had sent over, um, as far as the proposed schedule, right? I think the one I'm looking at has the.
With the yellow, with the yellow thing on it?
Yep, so it lists like a first-year counselor is fourteen fifty-five an hour, right? Um, fifteen oh five, fifteen thirty, fifteen fifty-five, sixteen fifty-five, right on down, right? Um, so my understanding is that seasonal minimum wage in state and Jersey is fourteen fifty-three an hour, right? Regular minimum wage is fifteen forty-nine an hour. So, so I'm just curious how, how you guys came to what, what amounts to two cents more per seasonal um, minimum wage for a first-year counselor, um, and did you?
So you're looking at council final, that, that.
Correct.
So what the, the email that I sent, the analysis that I did, is that I, the rec proposed.
Yeah.
We were suggesting that we give them what rec had proposed, that column, starting at fifteen dollars and on down.
Okay, so it starts at fifteen dollars an hour?
Yes.
Um.
And so for everybody to know, I ran the budget model using some of the information that Jamie was able to get me about the actuals from last year to model how things will look this year. Um, the, the extra, uh, the increased fees for camp will cover this and there will be a slight surplus to be able to cover if we increase the salaries for the pool employees as well.
Okay, so we're.
So I'm confused, because I thought finance and Sal and I.
We agreed.
And we came up with this council final.
Yes.
Yeah, then the finance committee was okay with it.
The finance committee was okay with it.
Yeah, so I'm confused how we got back to the fifteen, because we, we rounded up at fourteen fifty-three to fourteen fifty-five, so it was around, you know, fifty-five instead of fifty-three.
Councilman, the Houston felt that it was too low, that we should do a minimum of.
Well, I still.
I'm not putting words in your mouth.
That's one person, that's not a committee.
Well, no, no, we took it off the, the cal, the consent calendar, last week's, we all talked together.
That's right.
That's the whole thing tonight and we're talking forty-five cents between fifteen dollars and fourteen fifty-five.
I mean, for what it's worth, right? I, I, I feel that even though the state minimum wage for seasonal employees is fourteen fifty-three an hour, um, I feel that regular minimum wage should be our bottom line. Fifteen forty-nine should be our bottom line for first-year employees. Um, and then going up from there, you know, if you wanna do twenty-five cents per year, um.
Did you see this memo?
You said fourteen forty-nine.
Rec, it ju, it says in here that you're asking that these employees be approved at the council-approved rate. So the council-approved rate, is it fourteen fifty-five?
That's the council final.
That would be the committee-approved rate when, when it was me, Tyler and, uh, Mike.
Well, what, what is he, when he's talking about the council-approved rate in this email, or that, I'm sorry, what are they referring to? What rate, which rate are they referring to?
It says council final, right?
Yeah, because.
I don't know if they had this.
Well, we didn't have anything else as a final.
We decided to take.
There were no, there was no discussion of it.
But how did they get this?
I don't know, maybe somebody on rec.
So, yeah, so I guess what I'm questioning is like Sal and I met for over an hour and a half. We came up with this, these prices. I know it went to the council, but now, Mike, I hear you saying that it's fifteen, but I don't understand how it got from fourteen fifty-five to fifteen.
So the, I know the fourteen fifty-five is where you guys met and negotiated on. The one reason that I was uncomfortable giving rec what they proposed starting at fifteen was I was unsure if the budget would be able to support that.
Okay.
So then, once I did the model to figure out that it would support that, I was more comfortable giving them what they want, especially with, um, trying to close that gap with neighboring towns and some of the other feedback that we've received from rec. But if we do go higher to fifteen forty-nine, that starts putting pressure on that surplus where the budget will not be able to support it quite as much.
Well, just, just for reference, right, so I, I took the, what I thought was, um, your initial number. So I, I thought that the, it was the fourteen fifty-five, right? So just to flush out that first line, right? I'm assuming the math was fourteen fifty-five times twenty-one hundred, because that's the amount of hours you estimated, right? Fourteen fifty-five is the rate, times twenty-one hundred hours, that's, you get the, the thirty thousand, five fifty-five.
Oh, I have to look. Yeah, times the number of, of counselors, right?
Right, so, yeah, so I, I guess what I did is that I, I went in and I said, hey, listen, if we do minimum wage and then, um, you know, we add on essentially twenty-five cents per year to that, right? It, it ends up with an increase of just under four thousand dollars over what's currently proposed.
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah.
And, and so you're saying that the budget can't support an extra four thousand dollars to pay people.
If you go on, because the, the model that I did was only for camp.
Uh-huh.
We still need to give the appropriate raises to the pool employees as well.
Understood.
Which is what I didn't do, so the surplus would, would, um, support the raises for the pool employees.
Yeah, I have two, I have two worksheets here. One is three seven twenty-two-five and one is three twenty. And they have outlined the cost for camp for every part of camp and what the, um, what the revenue is and what the. Is that what you're talking about with surplus or one of these?
No, no, that's for expected for this year.
What, what?
Prior numbers from last year.
I used last year's numbers to inform the model.
These are twenty-two-five numbers, so this has.
Twenty-two-five yet.
Well, this is expected revenue and what they're planning for all the other programs and where they're gonna net out. Um, but I don't know.
Yeah, but he's just going off of past figures, so.
So what you're talking about, does that include all these other expenses?
Uh, yes, there's labor and non-labor expenses that I added and that, that's part of what Jamie gave it.
Like yoga, yoga.
Well, those are camp, um, no, because those are different activities separate from the camp. There's the, there's the top two rows. I think you're looking at something, yeah.
How long is a first-year counselor?
Sixteen, fifteen, fifteen? I mean, son's.
Freshman high school, then.
Well, maybe a fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen.
Fifteen.
So, I mean, I can see, I can speak to this because my kids, our four kids all went through this program. They were happy to get the minimum seasonal wage and they all got it. They were all thrilled with it. Um, and, you know, I think that this is a fair wage. It's a seasonal wage and it's a young child with no experience. It's their first job.
How many years ago was that?
It was the current rate that they were getting, the current seasonal minimum wage at the time.
At the time.
It could have been like probably ten, eight, nine, ten dollars back then, like seven fifty.
I think, I think we're, we need to spend more time discussing what the, and this is what Sal and I did. We looked at it rationally, like, if you have a second year coming back, they should be getting more than the first year. How much more? How much more should a third year get than, than a second year? And so we allocated funding so that each increase was fair over the, you know, the tenure of their experience. Um, and I think that those, those numbers make sense and, and it's based on past history of how they have the difference between the first year and second year. The other thing to note is that because the state raised the minimum wage, both the seasonal and the regular minimum wage, these increases are much higher for one year than these counselors would normally be getting. They don't usually raise the minimum wage, so they can get like a few cents more the next year. So this is a big increase over the first-year counselor rate from last year to this year compared to twenty-three to twenty-four and twenty-two to twenty-three. So, um, I think, you know, it's nice to be generous, but it's also good to be realistic and to understand that like the priority should be, you know, fairness as they ha, as they gain experience and maybe even, we, we tried to give some credence to this, you know, the fact that the lifeguards are in short supply, especially as they get more experience, because there, there's competition for them.
So you, Nancy, you're talking about realistic fairness. Um, it's fair to give them minimum wage and it's realistic also to give them minimum wage. I don't think it's.
It's a seasonal job.
I, 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 I think that.
That's your opinion. It's a seasonal minimum wage for a reason.
It is my opinion, but in this, in this day and age where everything, the cost of everything is going up and up and up and these kids, for them, twenty-five cents more per hour is a world of difference. I can tell you from my fifteen-year-old son, if he's making twenty-five cents more an hour somewhere else, because he can go to a different pool, make, uh, state minimum wage as opposed to seasonal minimum wage, he's gonna go there.
But then a parent has to drive him over.
I'm not driving my thirteen-year-old to another town when they can walk or drive, ride their bike. I mean, this is.
They're, they're gonna, they're gonna go with.
Forty years old.
They're gonna go with.
Not gonna need a ride from mom to dad.
From what I understand, they got all kinds of people up there applying. They don't even know how much they're making.
So I think we need to vote on this. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the council votes on this, so.
I have a lot of. I must restarted the conversation was because rec seemed very unhappy with the number that we gave and they expressed that to the three of us.
That we just got, that says that they wanna go with the, with the council, with the rate that the council approved. I mean.
I think then they need to speak with Jerry and the rec committee, because Jerry and the.
Going on down, they're, they're hiring people here and you can't wait.
They can't give them a number.
You can't give them a number. This is three, three meetings old now.
I mean, I, I, listen, the whole point of me bringing this up is because I have very clearly, very strong feelings about that it should be, uh, regular minimum wage, should be the starting point. If the rest of the council disagrees with me, then, then so be it, but that's where I, that's where I stand now. It said we should start at fifteen forty-nine an hour for the first year and then it should go up twenty-five cents per year from, from, uh, per hour from there.
So are you, Sal, are you okay with what's in yellow on this sheet?
My committees are okay with that.
Not what's in yellow.
Not what's in yellow. With the, with the bracket of twenty-two-five proposed, the rec proposed.
Well, Art wasn't here, so Art, what's your, what's your feeling?
You know, I, I saw, I read through it. I, I like that it's supported by the funds that are coming in. They're not taxpayers' money, right? This is all coming from.
It's a self-standing program.
I know my friend's son, not just, call our son, but they're going to a supermarket on Canada, because they're paying a little more money than another ones. I, I know there is a little, and, and there's probably kids, like you're saying, that are happy with anything, right? There's a local job, so, Mike, I know they seem passionate, uh, our, our rec director, about the possibility of not having proper, uh, amount of children, so I'm okay with the higher. I appreciate that, I have, I don't think, well, no, seriously, I, 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 everybody's time is valuable. Um, but if, if you guys feel like that's the number and if whatever minimum wage is, is gonna attract and have enough children, it seems like we're always top, I mean, I know, I have, my guest has been in camp a long time, so I don't really know the numbers, but, I mean, I haven't heard that we haven't had enough camp counselors.
We've always had enough camp counselors.
I mean, it's not really an answer, but I'm okay with the higher number if it's supported.
So maybe you can show me your numbers, because this one has camp as a net negative for the, for the.
Correct, yes.
Revenue and expenses, and the second line has after May thirteenth.
Yes, there's two different rates for, two different costs for camp. If you register early, it's a, it's a lower cost than if you register later.
Okay, so if I add these together, I'm still on negative five thousand, six hundred and six, so what am I missing? Yes, could you just pass this to me?
I don't have that, yeah.
It's eight-thirty, so.
Because I believe these are actuals from last year. Because there was no, there, there is no revenue, there is no expense, because registration wasn't open then. So these are, uh, actuals from last year.
So last year, they.
All right, so it's eight-thirty, continuous and unfinished business and, uh.
That, that was one, I have two different versions of that, I don't know why, but they did two different sheets, so.
If you please, uh, stand and join me in the pledge allegiance and prayer, please. Yes, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to adjourn conference?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Proved, and the ayes have it, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Almighty God, we ask you bless this governing body with an abundance of wisdom and understanding so that in fulfilling their public trust, every deliberation will result in actions that will promote the common good and general welfare of all people of Morse Plains. Notice the members of the governing body and borough staff. Any use of electronic devices during this meeting shall be used solely for the purpose of the borough business. My heart welcome everybody here tonight. Gallery Dolan, who is our auditor from Nissabacia, how's that? Good to see you. Anna Thomas, our CFO is here. We will be, uh, hopefully passing our budget, so they will be with us for the evening. Um, approval of minutes, Mr. Cortez.
Yes, um, approve for the conference executive and regular meeting of April third, twenty-two-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
The ayes have it.
Also, there's a conferencing, uh, a motion to approve the conference executive and regular meeting of April seventeenth, twenty-two-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Art, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye, I abstained.
Nancy and Tyler abstained? And move. Approval of consent calendar, Mr. Cortez.
Resolution twenty-two-five dash sixty-five impelled Morse Plains Fire Association, number one Raffle License, number three forty-nine dash twenty-five. Resolution twenty-two-five dash sixty-six impelled resolution for agreement for rapid rectangular flashing beacons, R R F B S parentheses, M Morse Plains, P forty-six point five-three, Route two oh two and Rhodeville Avenue. The Memorial Day Parade Committee be granted permission to hold its thirty-ninth annual Memorial Day Parade on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, twenty-two-five. Residents of Sanford Court be granted permission to hold a block party on Saturday, May thirty-first, twenty-two-five, from two-thirty to eight-thirty P M. With the rain date of Sunday, June first, twenty-two-five, from two-thirty P M. to eight-thirty P M. D P W provided necessary barricades. Retirement of Roseanne Dorman, Borough Court be accepted effective October first, twenty-two-five. Morse Plains Community Band be granted permission to serve alcoholic beverages at a band picnic to be held Wednesday, June eighteenth, with the rain date of June twenty-fifth, twenty-two-five, from five P M. to nine P M. at the Community Park Pavilion. Mark M. Royce Southern Drive be granted permission to serve alcoholic beverages at a family picnic to be held Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twenty-two-five, from eleven to four P M. at the Community Park Pavilion. Maria E. Lopez be hired as part-time custodial building maintenance at an hourly rate of twenty-five dollars per hour for cleaning of the snacks, stand, bathrooms, not to exceed five hours per week. Laura Tornero, one seventy-one, Number Two Way, be granted permission to serve alcoholic beverages at a family reunion to be held Saturday, June twenty-first, twenty-two-five, from twelve P M. to six P M. at the Community Park Pavilion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Art, roll call, please.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Ms. Reediston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Pontier.
Yes.
Ms. Berger.
Okay, thank you very much, and, uh, Roseanne? Very disappointed, but happy for you, so. I second that. I can see how disappointed you are.
I'm sad about it.
I hope they got that on video and, uh, but I, I wanna thank you for everything you've done for, for myself. You stepped into that wall, you really did a fantastic job and you, you held it all together for a long time, so I, I really appreciate everything you've done, and so the residents of the borough, a heartfelt thank you, so thank you very much. Do you wanna tell them how many years?
Uh, fourteen.
There you go, fourteen years. Thank you again. Today is a special day in Morris Plains. It marks the dedication and grand opening twenty years ago of our Morris Plains Community Center. I just want to read a little bit of history of the community center. I think it's something that everybody in this community has has been there, had a meeting there, had an event there. It's a gathering place for young and old. All our baseball teams are outside in that whole complex, but the the community center is really something special. And the people who saw this vision twenty years ago or wanted to nap by the time it was initiated really had a great idea and I I really commend those people prior for that vision. So just the history of the community center. The Board of Education dedicated to end, decided to end classes in nineteen ninety-four. In nineteen ninety-six, the governing body put the following to a public question on the ballot. Should the Community Park School become property of Morris Plains and to be dedicated as the community center for the use and enjoyment of all the citizens of Morris Plains? The vote was one thousand six hundred and ninety-six yes and six hundred and nineteen no, almost three to one for in favor. In two thousand and three, the Board of Education signed a contract with the town to transfer ownership. In October of twenty-three, we acquired the school and made some urgent repairs, fixing leaking skylights, skylights, roof and replacing a crumbling chimney. Asbestos removal and construction began in two thousand and four with a pause in the summer to allow for our summer recreation program to use the facility. This is written back then. So today is May first, the official opening, the official opening, although we have had our breakfast with the Easter bunny and voting for the school budget there already. And the museum has moved in and is open for business. The lower level of the community center is new home, is the new home for the museum and the plaque says, you know what the plaque says?
No.
Here lives Morris Plains in spirit, its soul, its history and its people. When you visit there, I know you'll enjoy it. And you have a lot of history of Morris Plains. I see the big smile mark. That sounds fantastic. Also, they were honored Shirley Campbell, who created the official seal of the borough of Morris Plains in nineteen seventy. Shirley was born in Morris Plains and had lived there all her life. She's an accomplished artist, displayed her work throughout New Jersey and her children and grandchildren, great grandchildren actually still live in the borough now. Three pictorial sections are incorporated in the more in the N P. One section is Tom Pearson's eighteen or sixteen eighty-five sawmill, which was the first business in Morris Plains. Another section is the former Warren Lambert, the past Pfizer site representing later industry. And the third section is a house and a tree-lined brook, representing the beauty and residential nature of Morris Plains. That's ribbon-cutting. A note of history on May third, nineteen sixty-three, the park, Community Park was dedicated. They gave out commemorative wooden nickels. Due to inflation, we were giving out wooden dollars. That was back then. So I don't know what it'll be now, maybe ten dollars, who knows? Uh, the community center is dedicated, as the plaque states, to serve all the people of Morris Plains, the community of Karen, and that's all of you. So I thought that was just important to read and and to bring to light some of the history here in Morris Plains and something that we all use and cherish in talking about it today, summer camp that still goes on over there and all kinds of activities. So I just want to say happy anniversary to the Morris Plains Community Center. Moving on to public invitation for discussion. Anybody wishing to speak, please come up, state committee, address and your company.
Hi, thank you. Hi, Lee Connor, two Tower Hill Road. I just have a question about the um the crosswalk with the flashing beacons on Rosedale and two oh two. Is that the same crosswalk that was part of the McDonald's application? It's not, so we're gonna get two?
There'll be two there.
Two crosswalks, one at Hillview, one at Rosedale, a block away?
Yes.
Two flashing ones?
Before McDonald's even came to town, it was even thought of. A resident came up to me and I brought it to Mike and that was the plan all along. The application went to the D O T, State D O T, they approved it and then gave us the grant. We're just receiving the points and it's obviously for the restitution. So, yes.
And so it dovetail, its function dovetails with the planned uh new one as part of the McDonald's project?
McDonald's will be responsible for the one at Hillview and two oh two.
Thank you.
My stand.
Just gonna say.
Yours is better. Good evening. Bill Breco nine, Higby Way. It's good to see the new council members and the old council members and Sal with his hand. I just have two items. Number one is um an update on the lighting between American Road and the railway station. Last year it was discussed and I believe approved to be added to the operating line of the budget for twenty twenty-five.
Bill, we forgot all about it. We forgot all about it.
Did you now?
Yeah, you'll have to go back to Florida before residents over there kill you.
That's fine by me. You'll you'll miss my tax dollars though.
I will, but hopefully the the council passes the budget tonight and those lights are in this button.
Perfect. I thank you. The second item, as you know, I'm the president of the association at the venue of the Americans. Homeowners are concerned since the California fires and the New Jersey fires about the brush in the tree-lined area of that pathway.
Uh, we'll have to take a look at it.
Yeah, they're concerned. They think it should be cleared out. So I bring it to the attention of the council.
Yeah, I'll have I'll have the.
On that slope, Bill? No, no, the pathway between American Roads, between the venue and the train station, there's wooded area on the right and left. But the one on the left, as you're approaching American, there are homes there. They're more concerned about the one on the right. The one on the left, that's pretty. Where the other path is. Correct. The dirt path. Correct.
There has been a path back there for a hundred years.
Understand that.
You know, just been paved though now, so.
Understood.
But we will, we'll take a look at it and find out who's actually responsible.
Okay, great. I would appreciate that. That's it. Great seeing you all.
I have another question about that. So the concern is that there's natural area that might ignite?
No, it's the undergrowth, the fallen trees, the fallen branches and so on. Their their fear is, especially after the fires in South Jersey, and it's been very dry. Now hopefully we're gonna get rain next week for the whole week. But their concern is anything could ignite that and they're fearful that it would spread quickly into the venue.
I I guess. I mean, it's part of the natural understory of any natural environment to have, you know, the brush and things like that, but we'll see what they look like.
It's considered fuel, you know, the sticks and the leaves.
Correct.
For a brush fire, that's what creates it. I I I fought a few brush fires in town in my career on the fire department, but we've never really done any controlled burning. I don't know.
No, I mean, that's not gonna happen, I can tell you. We have, I mean, there's brush fires up on on the hill often over the summertime, you know, where those houses are, you know, in between Greystone and Power Hill and all that up there. Almost every summer, there's there's some sort of fire activity up there, right? Like something.
Yeah, Power Hill, that's your.
Yeah.
Look, that passion just right now, ten points.
No, but.
No, 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 no. Making your misunderstands. Then I'm not suggesting lighting a fire.
No, 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 no.
They're suggesting clearing it so to prevent the fire.
We'll have to take a look at it. I can't guarantee whether, first of all, it can't be done because some of that is wetland back there, marshy areas.
Right.
But we certainly take a look at it, but no promise.
Greatly appreciate it. Welcome back. Welcome to the new council members as well.
We'd love to have you in the community of Karen, Bill.
Well, it is my honor and pleasure to have been here for forty years. Thank you.
Better than Florida.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do you know one? I pulled a public form. Thank you, Bill. Reports of committees and or department heads, finance, this word.
Okay. Sort of subset of finances, because I was on it last year. The Green Team met on April twenty-first and they released their first newsletter in last week's weekly email. The topic was electric automobiles. So you can look for that on the borough website. It'll probably be in tomorrow's issue, again, of the weekly email. They're also partnering with clean communities to organize a cleanup this Saturday. It's gonna be raining at nine A M near the area of Stop and Shop. So volunteers will get bags and gloves and they're meeting at the parking lot between Stop and Shop and Wyker and all are welcome, but kids must be accompanied by a parent. The library had their annual shredding fundraiser last Saturday, April, April point six. When I was there, there was light traffic, but the cars that did come brought more boxes than usual, because I think they moved it from twice a year to once a year. So they think it was going to be successful. I wasn't there at the end, but I'll report back on that. They do rely on fundraising for their operating budget. You'll see in the borough budget that's introduced tonight, that's being voted on tonight. The borough of Morris Plains again donated, allocated a donation of one hundred and twenty-five thousand for the library operating budget, but they also welcome donations from the community. The clerk's office, our liability coverage in the borough is through the MEL GIF. That stands for the Municipal Excess Liability Joint Insurance Fund. The MEL serves about seventy percent of New Jersey municipalities. And before the formation of GIFs, local governments had two choices. They had commercial insurance or individual self-insurance. And commercial insurance is very expensive for a small municipality like ourselves and it was prohibited for most local governments in New Jersey. So affiliation with MEL has saved New Jersey taxpayers about four billion dollars, which is great for for our budget. So as part of that, the MEL GIF requires members to conduct regular safety meetings with department heads. We get a safety incentive of two hundred and fifty dollars for doing those meetings. And Roseanne, our clerk, convened a safety meeting last week on April twenty-fourth, which also happened to be Take Your Children to Work Day. So we had some teenagers in attendance as well as the D P W superintendent, Lieutenant Gill from the police department, our new court administrator, Melissa, and Brianne from the clerk's office and Roseanne and myself. Each department reported out their new training and policies they are putting in place to reduce liability to the borough. I don't want to steal the chief's thunder, but examples include use of force training and other training for the police department, C P R training for D P W. And we also discussed some options to improve cybersecurity for council members. So we'll be revisiting that hopefully soon. Their next meeting is July twenty-fourth. The clerk's office is also working on preparing for the upcoming primary election on June tenth. If you've recently moved or a first-time voter, eighteen-year-olds, you can register to vote by mail or online by May twentieth in order to vote in this primary election. You can also check your voter registration status or your vote by mail status online. And the clerk's office is also working on farmer's market applications, food handler applications, financial disclosures from the councils, council and other members of the borough and Oprah requests. They've also been taking a lot of calls about grass and brush pickup. So for those who don't know, leaf pickup happens from September through December. There's no leaf pickup in the spring and summer months. Grass pickup has now resumed for for April through November every Wednesday and brush is the last week of the month. We do have specifics on the borough website, so try not to call the phone.
Yeah, we'll see how that works.
It's out there. It's available. Finance Department, I attended a New Jersey League of Municipalities State Budget Workshop on lunch in line on April twenty-fourth. There's some information. That's where we got that proposal to support the Energy Tax Reform Resolution. Our auditors also completed their annual audit of all of the borough's accounting records and financial transactions. And the council will get a copy of their report in the next few weeks and then it will be made available to the public. Our CFO is also working, Anna, who's here tonight. Any unpaid, this is something I learned, any unpaid property taxes, she makes a report to the state and they will withhold tax refunds for people who don't pay their local property taxes. So we can get that money. So I foiled, but that's never happened.
We don't have that problem.
People pay their taxes here. Are we the best or what?
Ninety-eight point eight percent.
Are the best.
I left her the finance.
She's also doing a report for them on seniors, citizen, veteran deductions, who's getting them, how many. And finalized reports for our American Rescue Plan funds, which we received, we had to spend down through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. We received six hundred and sixty-four thousand in American Rescue Plan funds and expended them for upgrades to the community center, the pool, fire apparatus and playground equipment. So that that was great for the borough. Reminder that the state is offering info sessions for senior citizens about the single application for their tax relief programs. As far as the website, we renewed the contract with Agile Websites for upgrades to the borough website and online tools as needed. And a reminder from Things Talk editor to please send in photos and stories of community events coming up in the next couple of months. The the next issue is coming out in May, so those are finished, but anything else will be going out in July or August issue. And I have some comments on the budget, but I'm gonna wait for the budget, I guess, discussion later. Is that okay, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, that's it.
Public safety, Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So the CERT resolution passed at the last meeting. I was excited about that. There will be an opportunity for residents who are interested to volunteer. Chief Karaski said the police department will post something on their Facebook page, so the public has knowledge of that. And then they will do a training and to my knowledge, Lieutenant Bob Gill will be spearheading that. The goal would be to try to get enough of a team together that we could have that in place for the Memorial Day Parade, just to have a little bit of extra help out there. On that note, the department is planning and getting ready for the Memorial Day Parade. We'll have some assistance from neighboring towns to help share the workload and assure the safety of all residents and parade personnel. There's been some interest and questions about the police department and ride-alongs. I spoke with Chief Karaski and I'd like to start to work on a resolution in the near future that would allow for more citizen ride-alongs or possibly an internship opportunity for residents and a way to kind of see how they work and walk those on. We had a meeting with the conceptual plans committee last Thursday. We went over the new schemes along with comparing and contrasting with the older ones. The committee and the mayor are comfortable to take the next step. So now the museo group will do a formal presentation to the governing body in June. The governing body will then discuss, potentially narrow down the schemes, and then the plan is to present this to the public for discussion and questioning. The initial idea would be to have a session in September and a session in October. So what would happen is the museo group would would present what they presented to us to the entire public. So all the residents would have an opportunity to see the plans, to ask questions, to express concerns and really just feel transparent and a part of the process. After that, this would be a referendum, which would be on the ballot in November. So this would also give every resident the opportunity to actually vote on whether they want this to happen and whether potentially, again, it would be the renovation here or the new department offsite.
That's that's just a possibility right now.
If we get to that point, right.
Yeah, but, yeah, so we're looking into the.
Correct, correct. But just saying in the sense that for such a big decision with a financial burden, it would be something that comes to the public, it not, would not be something that just stays in and is decided on by the governing body.
Is there a deadline for doing that if we want to put something on the ballot?
We're checking with the county clerk.
Wait, you're asking the clerk on the deadline or timeline of that? No, it's also a couple, couple, you know, balls in the air on that one, but we're making our progress moving forward. The traffic committee also met this past Monday. We discussed the Glenbrook payment project and our need for added lineage. I know Chief, Chief Karaski after that had sent an email to Leon and Bill Ryden for sort of a cost quote and possible change to the current work order. This is, if it does get approved, would add the white lines to the side and a couple other things. We also went over the most recent complete in Green Streets policy written by Jim Hunt. The majority were in favor of some version of this being approved. They just, the traffic committee itself was not exactly sure what their role would be in this. But regardless, they do advise that we can bring this down to the governing body to discuss and devise a path forward. So that is something that in the next couple of weeks I'll be speaking with and sending out to the council and we'll be discussing that. Chief Karaski met with the Little League to discuss opening day, which is tomorrow, May second. They're expecting a very large turnout. So just making sure that we have the proper staffing and understanding how the events of the evening are gonna go. I'd also like to shoot out a quick congratulations to Officer Naiwon Shaw on welcoming a new baby to the family. Was that a boy or a girl?
Baby girl.
Baby girl to the family, so excellent news there. On the firefight, we had, they had the live burn a couple weeks ago for the training. They are still getting calls almost every day and at a higher rate than normal and in the past few years. I had the opportunity, I'm sure Bill will go in more detail, but I met with Bill, Mayor Carr, Fire Prevention Chief Chris Che, Chris Shea and Fire Chief Kevin Rongo to discuss the fire prevention ordinance that we've been updating. Again, I'm sure Bill will give a little more in-depth on that. The Fire Prevention Chief did finish his March report. Since I was not at the last meeting, I'll just very quickly go over it. In March, he addressed a hundred and six different items in the revenue. and the revenue collected was around fourteen thousand dollars. Um, on one of his notes, he said they did experience their first lithium-ion e-bike fire. And there was a little bit of damage suffered to the home, but everyone was there. They got it out and everyone's safe, no, no injuries or anything, so that is fantastic. The new court administrator has started full-time. To my knowledge and what I hear, things are going well so far. Sarah Thornberry's been helping out part-time with the transition in the meantime. And I also got the report from the summary of receipts from them, and they were, they collected about ten thousand dollars for the month of March. And I do plan on having a public safety meeting in the next couple of weeks with Art and Sal, just to go over some of the pressing issues and things coming up and make sure everyone's on the same page there. So that's all for me tonight.
Chief?
Evening. I'll start by congratulating Roseanne on her retirement. There's probably not a day that goes by that I don't stop up at the office or make a phone call. She works very well with the, the Police Department, and we really couldn't sustain the law enforcement agency downstairs without all your help and done. So thank you very much for, for me and, and for my staff. So you're surely gonna be missed. Prescription date takeback was this past Saturday at Stop and Shop. We were second in the local region of agencies collecting prescription narcotics. Hundred seventy-two pounds of prescription medications were turned in. So thank you, everybody who kept there to stop by, from the mayor and council, as well as all the residents that participated. Uh, as Tyler and I think Nancy may have mentioned, uh, we did CPR training with our DPW members, so two of our officers. Actually, a third officer was involved. We, we trained our, our Spanish-speaking DPW employees. So all of our DPW staff is now fully certified in CPR, thanks to Officer Kozkaski, Officer Grauer, and Officer Pressiato helping with the translation. Our Academy Police Recruits, uh, they passed their final physical assessment yesterday, and we look forward to them graduating in a little more than a month on June second, uh, adding to our Police Department staff. Uh, as was mentioned previously as well, uh, we have Little League Opening Day tomorrow, beginning at five PM, due to being a combined league with Morris Township and Morristown. I asked for assistance from Morris Township and Morristown Police Departments. Morris Township's setting is two, and Morristown's setting is one, officer. I'll be there as well, but if you're in the area, community park around five PM, it's gonna be a little crowded. We're expecting anywhere between nine and a thousand or so, maybe more, um, residents and kids and adjoining residents and their children as well. So, um, we're gonna do some overflow parking on the residential streets. We'll sound the rave alert tomorrow, so just be mindful, be a little cat over there. We'll have enough support staff on their way over there. Um, the final thing I have is that Sunday, May eleventh, mark, mark Sunday, May eleventh, marks the start of National Police Week. It's a week to honor all fallen police officers who gave their lives in the ultimate sacrifice to residents of our country. Um, as part of that, three of our police officers will depart from Washington DC on a three-hundred-mile bike ride to honor the fallen police officers, uh, ending in candlelight vigil at the Police Officers Memorial on Tuesday. I believe that's the thirteenth off the top of my head, but the three police officers, Lieutenant Gill, Sergeant Hines, and myself will depart Friday, May ninth on that three-hundred-mile journey. Um, and certainly enough motivation to get our, our keisters there, so.
They're sore keisters today.
That it will be, but well worth it. So unless there's any questions or comments, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Public Works, Mr. Bruce.
Just wanna go back to public safety for a second. I received an email from a resident yesterday, and she had a complaint about some speeding on Roseville. She and her husband just moved in. So I forwarded that to our chief, Jeff Bachman, a sergeant who runs our traffic division, and Ralph Patundo. And they, um, said they would handle, they responded right away. You guys do a great job every day keeping us safe and mental women down there. And Jeff was on his way home from a class at Rutgers, I think he told me.
Yeah, Traffic Engineering, uh, or Traffic Safety Unit. Jeff's going to a Traffic Engineering class.
He swung by the resident's house. Uh, they were home, spoke to them, ensured that they were reviewing what they could to... I know some people say the little radar sign doesn't do anything, but that radar sign does take pictures and it gives times and a lot of data, so then the police officers know when to go. Should probably tell the speeders out there when to go and look for them.
Don't worry, there's plenty of them. Don't worry about that.
So he assured that they would look into, and there was one speed limit sign. It was further down the road, so there was some discussion on that. So, um, anyway, they were both very amazed that they got the, uh, quick attention and concern about their, their safety issues over there. So there was some discussion about speed bumps and everything, but more to come with that. But I do appreciate the efforts that your Police Department does every day, so thank you. Okay, so DPW, next department here. Um, they have worked, they work on their police cars and our town cars every day. Uh, clean out all the garbage and the dog waste, of course. Uh, they packed some bottles throughout the town. Uh, they cleaned up a lot of the storm basins from the winter debris and some spring debris. Planted some trees at Robert's Garden. Uh, we're getting Robert's Garden ready for our famous Memorial Day Parade. They was doing a great job of that. Uh, repaired some security cameras and reset the clocks at the community center. They installed a new basketball hoop at the community center, so the kids have something that will be a little more permanent over there for them. Uh, they got some trees at Waltham Park, trimmed some trees. And as was mentioned earlier, CPR, CPR training was done out of the DPW. And they are getting our pool ready for the season. And they ran and cleaned the sewers four times this period, so we thank them for what they do. That's all I have.
Public Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Cortez.
I have a short report. I was out last week, so missed a couple of meetings, ma'am. First, I want to just thank the governing body for approving, uh, the part-time custodial. It's important that we finally finalize that we're responsible for cleaning. Outside from, there are Little Leagues, people there on Sundays. This is, this is a really good thing. And yes, it will be operational Friday, tomorrow night, when they start playing over there. But thank you, everybody. I missed a rec meeting, but I, everything went well, and, um, the Family Day is under, is underway, and everything's been, uh, you'll probably have it next week for the, uh, for the approval. There's gonna be more rides, a lot of funds. It's, it's a lot of, uh, it's a little different in Marsh Plains, because I, when I was in rec, sadly, there was an incident almost twenty-seven years ago with the coroner, we're here local, St. Virgil's, uh, child was, uh, was murdered. And I just couldn't sleep that night, and, uh, I put in a program, Mike was part of that, to put background checks on everyone on immigration, anyone that's close to a child. But it makes the bidding a little harder, because a lot of people that bid these Family Day events, they don't, a lot of towns don't require it. We do in Marsh Plains. So it's a little harder sometimes to get bids, a little hard to get, you know, pricing. It makes it a little difficult because we are that way, and nor do I ever want to change. I don't think anybody in this governing body wants to change that. So I really commend the people that go out there and, uh, try to, try to get these numbers to meet all our requirements, too, and they did a great job. Um, of course, I missed Arbor Day, but I heard it went well, because I was away. And it's, it's a wonderful thing. I think Frank started that, right?
I don't know who started it.
Thirty, forty, thirty years ago. Um, want to remind everybody about Boy Scouts this Sunday, uh, May fourth, eleven AM, if you guys could do it. I know I talked about it last time, but just getting it out there. Uh, we, uh, I missed the downtown meeting, but, uh, I was able to, uh, to, uh, they want to put bicycle, really nice, it says, Morris Plains, and their bicycle racks. They want to put them on two oh two. And that's where I thought they should go, in the, in the B zone by, you know, school station. However, uh, when I consulted with, with Don, there's a four-foot setback that you can't do anything. And that kind of defeats the whole purpose, and it would have been nice to put them in. So what, uh, today I met with him, we walked the entire street to see where we could put these racks. I also was in contact with Allison from, uh, downtown Morris Plains. And his thought was to put them, uh, on those, at two alleyways. But they are private properties, so we will be needing permission. So that's where I'm at with that, but, um, if we do get them, we'd like to bring them closer to two oh two. This way, the people can, yeah, they're, they're really nice bike racks, they really are. I'm gonna send you guys all a picture of them also, and I'm also gonna send you, uh, an email to the governing body, uh, from, um, Farmer's Market Committee, of all the people they have, and I think they're doing a great job, and they're very respectful of the local businesses that are here, and I really commend them. And, uh, I, I actually, uh, missed going to that meeting in a sense that I, I really enjoy, uh, the people that are there, they're fun, they're dynamic, and, uh, I just, I just, I was there for two hours last time, for like fifteen minutes. And then you had a couple of people that always laugh, and they keep you laughing, it was just fun. And I think that should, that should be it, Mayor. I apologize for a short thing, I was away, so that's all I have.
Very good.
Oh, I want to compliment the, the water authority, the job they're doing with everything and the communication. There's one, Mike, he's an engineer for overseeing the job. They leave cones, they leave the fences around the equipment. The streets are almost spotless considering what, what, what they go through. And I talked to Mike a couple of times, engineer. You can see some of the residents that they were supposed to start, but of course, one job got delayed, so he's gotta go back to the town. We're gonna shut your water off. I, I'm nothing of an A-plus, but I'm gonna give them an A, and I'm in construction. Really, really, really good, and considering, you know, what, 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 what they're doing. And you go on a street that was dug up, looked like World War II. I'll give you an example, Diana, or, and then at nighttime, it's pretty good. Paved, nice and neat, clean, no dust.
That's a nice shirt.
And it, it really is a, 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 a nice thing to see. Thank you, bud.
Public Health Sanitation and Sewers, Mr. Oggy.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, so for our teen center, uh, Mystery Night was a success last Friday, uh, but not without its own struggles. Uh, half an hour before, um, the cast and the equipment was supposed to be here. We got a phone call that the vehicle was stuck in New York City, which doesn't ever bode well on a Friday night trying to get here on time. But luckily, the staff and the volunteers were able to get that, um, event underway with minimal delay and within the allotted time and all, without having to reschedule, because that would have been very, very difficult, if not impossible. So, not good for them. Uh, the seventh grade event is coming up next. Um, and like Art said, uh, DPW installed the, the permanent basketball hoop at the house, so all the kids will be able to enjoy that, um, for the rest of the teen center and all the summer camps over the summer. Um, also for DPW, uh, we were able to allocate some of the funds from our Clean Communities grant, uh, that we used for litter cleanups to offset some of our, um, uh, the storm water, leaf and grass cleanup that the DPW does, so that way the taxpayers don't have to shoulder all of it. We're able to use some of the grant funding to, uh, to be applied to some of those costs uh, for our Clean Communities. Uh, there's fifteen volunteer groups right now that are coordinating their, uh, their schedules to perform their cleanups around the Borough with our coordinator, James Marandino. And Board of Health will be meeting on March fourteenth, that's in two weeks, uh, this month. And, uh, yes, she was plugged for Little League, so thank you for covering that, Chief.
Fresh off a plane from California, right?
Yes.
Thank you for making it here. That's, that's great. Maybe throw out a pitch tomorrow. I'm moving up, are you? Do you realize it coming?
Yeah, it's a shame.
Ordinances and Public Utilities, Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so as Tyler mentioned earlier, this past Monday, Mayor Tyler and I sat down with Chief Rongo, Tom Marshall Shea, discussed the mayor's questions. Um, we did all come to an agreement on the answers to the questions, and I believe now the next steps are for our attorney, John Heran, to, to review. Um, so barring any issues, we look to, uh, introduce this ordinance very soon. Uh, just a reminder to the public on what the ordinance is. Um, it's an ordinance to require multifamily dwelling units to obtain certifications and compliance for smoke sets and devices. It updates the Fire Inspection Code to require inspections anytime an apartment is delivered to a new renter. Uh, it also allows the Borough Fire Inspector to take on the inspections of the new multifamily units. And, uh, currently, there is no requirement for inspections for or of smoke detectors in multi-unit residences and structures, so this ordinance would update that requirement uh, so that all our residents are safe. Um, let's see. Just on, uh, so just some updates from the Construction Office. So, uh, four thirty-five Speedball Avenue, which is friendly to McDonald's. Uh, as of, uh, actually today, I spoke with Don Slarno and Bill O'Connor. Um, no permits have been issued for any work over there just yet. Um, uh, a stop work notice has been issued. Um, as the work that was being done was not in compliance with their codes. And, uh, they did, I'm sorry, uh, they did pull one demo permit for water, but that's it. Um, so outside of that, there have been no other permits pulled for that, for that location. There's been no movement over at the Wykurt site, um, which also got approved. Uh, the warehouses, um, I believe, Mr. Mayor, there is a CO, but no tenant over there. There's a certificate of occupancy, but no tenant over at the warehouses?
Correct. The, the, the construction is complete, everything's passed, and they do have CO, but...
No tenant, okay, excellent. Um, Planning Board update. Uh, the Planning Board had their meeting on April twenty-first, seven thirty PM. Uh, we memorialized one application, PB four twenty-four one on I Mountain Way, with resolution PB twenty-five dash oh nine for minor subdivision. This, uh, splits the lot, splits that lot into two lots and adds a variance for a minimum side yard setback for the existing home that will remain. Uh, we also dismissed another application, PB three dash twenty-three, Six Parker Drive, with resolution PB twenty-five dash ten for minor subdivision, uh, June of twenty twenty-three. The Planning Board deemed the application incomplete, and on April fifth, twenty twenty-five, the homeowner notified the Planning Board that they no longer wanted to pursue this subdivision. It was dismissed without prejudice, which means the application is temporarily dismissed, and it allows the applicant to refile with the board in the future. Um, the next meeting of the Planning Board is actually a week earlier than normal due to Memorial Day. It's, it will be Monday, May twelfth, at seven thirty PM here in this room. Uh, Zoning Board Adjustment, they had their meeting April twenty-eighth, seven thirty PM. Uh, they did hear one application, BA one dash twenty-five, thirty-seven Hawthorne Avenue, for completeness. They did deem the application incomplete due to some missing information. Uh, their next meeting is also a week earlier than normal due to Memorial Day. Their next meeting will be Monday, May nineteenth, at seven thirty PM here in this room. Um, just on, so the Checklist Committee has finalized drafts of the application form and the checklist form. Uh, they have been reviewed by the Zoning Board of Adjustment and Planning Board Attorneys. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe you received the draft from Mr. Gary Bagley?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, uh, I know Dave, Mr., uh, sorry, Mr. Schultz, Chair of the Zoning Board, has circulated to his board for review. Um, he's asked the Zoning Board to bring their comments to the May nineteenth meeting. Um, Mr. Mayor, once you review, I believe the next step is to bring it back to the Planning Board for their review. Excellent. Um, so the, the intent of all this is to make, uh, it easier for the applicants. Um, essentially streamline the application, whether it goes to the Planning Board or Zoning Board Adjustment. Um, it, it is intended to be a downloadable PDF on the website. Um, and it will allow for applications to be deemed administratively complete by the Borough Professionals and the Board Chair without coming to the board. So it's gonna significantly reduce the, the amount of meetings that are required. Um, waivers, however, will always go to the boards, as professionals do not have the authority under the MLU, alter grant waivers. Um, and as I said, it'll streamline the process and reduce the cost to the applicant. And that is my opinion.
Um, just on affordable housing. Um, we still have not received our, uh, number from, uh, from the court, which we were supposed to receive on March thirty-first. Still haven't received it yet. The, uh, Affordable Housing Committee met this afternoon, and we will be moving forward on our, uh, June thirtieth deadline, our next, uh, our next deadline that we have to, uh, well, we have to abide by, because nobody else does. But, uh, so June thirtieth is our next deadline, and, uh, so we'll be moving forward. Much more information is, is available, I will give it to you in, in due time. We have been talking about a town hall, but it's kind of hard to talk about a town hall when you don't have your numbers, but...
What's the deadline for? What do you have to provide?
A plan. And, uh, so I think there's more, there's more to come to put out, so. But as soon as we get any of that information, we'll be sure to put it out there somehow. And, uh, we are gonna schedule a, a town hall or a question and answer session with our professionals and attorneys, um, as long as the time is, is, is right, really. But I thought it would be by now, but, uh, obviously it's not, so keep up to date. We have no introductions of ordinances, we have no ordinances on second reading, no resolutions. We have unfinished business. We will do the, uh, the budget adoption first, and then we'll talk about the pool salaries, so you can get, uh, Valerie and Anna on their way this evening, so. Uh, good evening, council members, Borough staff, and residents of Morris Plains. I'm here with you tonight to present the twenty twenty-five municipal budget. A budget developed with collaboration, diligence, and a shared commitment to maintaining the high level of service for our, that our residents expect. I'd like to thank all of our department heads, board chairpersons, and their valuable input, for their valuable input and hard work during this process. This year, we are faced with several fin- financial, fiscal challenges, including an anticipated loss in revenue, mostly notable from permit fees. Additionally, the state has not allocated any new funding for municipal relief for twenty twenty-five, resulting in a loss of sixty-four thousand dollars. On a more stable note, we... On a more stable note, we will continue to receive the same amount of energy tax receipts as last year. Despite these challenges, our twenty twenty five municipal appropriations remain under the allowable appropriation cap after exclusions. The overall appropriations increased by four point six percent excluding the rest reserved for uncollected taxes. However, like many municipalities, we are experiencing rising costs. Significantly or specifically, liability insurance has increased by over nine percent and the state health insurance premiums have risen by more than sixteen percent, which we plan to review, and Nancy went over that earlier. We remain focused on long-term financial stability. This budget enables an aggressive paydown of municipal debt in the amount of one million, nine hundred thousand dollars. Additionally, it fully funds several key twenty twenty five capital projects by reducing future debt obligations by over five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. For strategic planning, the council also reduced the original capital improvement request by over a million dollars, repurposing funds that completed projects from the deference, repurposing funds from completed projects and deferring select items like DPW sewer flusher, a fire prevention vehicle and a feasibility study for further review. Capital projects such as improvements to borough roads and Styles Avenue with a grant from the DOT, purchases for the fire department of radios and a one point one million dollar fire engine, police department request for an external defibrillator and speed alert sign to help keep our community safe, municipal upgrades, adding a tennis wall and installation of lights on the train station path. For the average Morris Plains household assessed at four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the local portion of property tax will increase by two hundred and thirty five dollars in two thousand and twenty five. No one welcomes tax increases. It's important to note that our ratables have increased by two point seven percent, two point seven five percent over last year, helping to balance the overall fiscal picture. This budget is more than numbers, it's a reflection of our priorities. I am committed to keeping an eye on future spending increases and I hope the council shares the same view. After a careful review of both revenue and expenditures, we've crafted a financial plan that ensures continuation of all borough services without interruption or reduction. Morris Plains remains strong, resilient and forward-thinking. This budget reflects our unwavering commitment to fiscal responsibility while continuing to meet the needs of our residents. Thank you. With that.
Good job, Mayor.
Good budget.
Okay, I have to do this? I guess I do?
I state the public hearing on the introduced budget is now open. Is there any members of the public that have any questions? We have our CFO and our auditor with us tonight. Hearing no further interest, I close the public hearing on the introduced budget and ask Councilwoman Berga to move the resolution.
I move the adoption of the twenty twenty five municipal budget be resolved, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty five municipal budget be resolved by the governing body of the borough of Morris Plains, County of Morris, that the budget herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purpose stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriation and authorization of the amount of fourteen million, sixty seven thousand, six hundred and forty six dollars and eleven cents for municipal purposes.
Is there a second?
Second, myself.
Myself, roll call please.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Brum.
Yes.
Mr. Houston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Puntier.
Yes.
Ms. Lek.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the council and everybody who's involved. Anna or Valerie, any words on the budget?
Yeah, I just want to like to thank all of the department heads and the board council people for their input on this budget and also all the council members for our meetings and all the questions and hopefully I answered everything. I also want to thank our auditor for being the second to surprise about this and making sure everything is dotted and crossed.
And today, and this year was our three-year.
And I say you were in the three or so.
Three-year review by the state?
The state also, yes. So, every third year, the budget is reviewed not only by us and signed off by us, it is also reviewed by the Division of Local Government Services. And they came back with two very minor questions.
Very minor.
And we had our approval to adopt within hours of the two questions. So, in addition, the state has also signed off on this budget this year.
That's good.
Yes.
Certainly good to get that check mark.
You always like that check mark. And you know, you always get a little nervous waiting once you hit that button and wait for their review because you never know what they're gonna come up with, but.
We thank you, Valerie, also for your guidance throughout this whole process. We might get a little bit of time off now, but it starts very shortly here for next year already, so.
Exactly.
Again, you're very responsive, I think the borough is very lucky to have not only the company here in the borough, but if it was their representative and I think it really served the borough well. And I think the working relationship with not only Anna, myself and everybody else that you touch is good. I think it's invaluable that you do the school and the borough at the same time so we can kind of collaborate when we need to. So I think it's all in all, a very great relationship. Thank you, Valerie, I appreciate it.
As Councilwoman Berga said, the audits are done. My office is just actually in the process of processing the books. They should be down here on Borough Hall by Monday.
Great.
We'll have a lot of fun.
Ms. Hannah, something?
Yeah, so I, this is first time I was finance chair, so I had a different look at the budget, trying to take a more high-level view. And I really do thank Anna for answering my many, many questions. And also I want to mention that Tracy was very involved in putting together a budget book and I know that's a lot of labor and work and so we appreciate that as well. And all the department heads who worked with us to get their information in time and who even presented some of their budgets here to the council in front of the public so we could see them. That's it, like I, as I said, taking a different look at it this year. I wanna really encourage the council members to kind of take a little different approach with looking at the budget and really start looking at it now in terms of how we can be a little more discerning. And I also mentioned in one of prior meetings a couple of weeks ago that I think we do a great job, as the mayor said, of maintaining our services at a very high level for residents, what they expect. But I also think that we should get some feedback on that because, you know, having an increase of an average of around two hundred and forty dollars for the average home is not nothing when a lot of other things are also increasing. So I think if we can kind of take a high-level view of our, not just each department that we represent, but sort of as a borough, what we can do to work together across departments to try to maintain our spending or reduce it where we can. And, you know, I look at our rate of, our tax rate of ninety two cents for one hundred dollars of assessed value. And I just looked at a few other towns. And the other thing I looked at was the percentage of our property tax bill that is our municipal budget. And in Morris Plains, it's thirty six percent this year. And some neighboring towns are in the low twenty twos, twenty-two percent, twenty-two point four percent. And they also have a lower tax rate per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Now, every town has different services and some have utilities that pay income to the town so they get some different income streams than we have here available to us. But I just need to better understand as a new person in the finance department how they're getting to these numbers and what they're doing differently than what we're doing and also get some input from the public about what is essential and, you know, what is, what's the dollar of their tax rate mean to them? And what's, what are they going to compromise on as we go forward into a difficult economic climate I think we're in right now with a lot of tariff stress and potential changes to costs? So, I just want to say like, let's work together, let's try to dialogue and let's think about how we can reach out to the public and get some input on, you know, our priorities for spending.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment, if I may. So I just want to say as a new, one of the three new people here, I wanna commend Anna Yu for explaining how this all works because what I do at home in my Google Sheets spreadsheet is nothing like what you do. Government budgeting is way different than budgeting for your home. And it was clear to me after the first four or five hour meeting that we went through that you really need to have a very in-depth knowledge of how all this works in order to keep us on track. So, again, as the new council member coming in, I really appreciate all your knowledge and your expertise and keeping this all on track. So, thank you very much.
I started that. Thank you, Valerie, thank you, Anna, appreciate your time tonight and the time throughout the years. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, man.
Thank you. Unfinished business, more unfinished businesses, the salaries for the pool. Where we wrap with that?
Well, so, again, where I was at with it was my feeling, and I brought this up, was that the base rate should be fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents, which was the standard minimum wage. There seemed to be some discussion and disagreement, the council on that, so that's where I was at.
So do we have, do you have the sheet that everybody has that we're talking about? We're all talking about this sheet, is that correct?
You should have a copy in your file table.
No, I have that, but I'm, who was talking about what? Was the council thing?
Like a comparison of all the programs and.
Well, I got, I mean, I probably got it from Anna.
No, I don't, yeah, but that's, that was twenty twenty five's, what they anticipated.
I live three twenty, twenty twenty five, you're right.
And what does that sheet, what does that show?
Well, it shows enhancement programs, most of this is what they're budgeting for enhancement program. But at the top, it shows camp revenue and expenses. And then camp after May thirteenth, I guess the registration price increases. So they're expecting this much revenue and this much expense. I don't know how they're allocating the expense like that, but I'm looking at these two numbers and I'm trying to figure out how are we getting to a surplus? And the other thing is our budget, our town budget is holistic. So, not every department funds their expenses. Some bring in funding that is used in other departments, as we've seen. You know, so it's not necessarily a dollar for dollar.
I do, you know.
Go ahead, Mayor, what?
I mean, I think this is adequate. I think talking about fourteen-year-old kids, they don't have car payments, they're not making mortgages and, you know, they're seasoned, okay? They do, they come back every year, most of them, a lot of them, okay? Not all of them. Some of them don't like doing it, some come back, some love doing it. You know, it's for the town's kids. Do you have to be competitive with a quick check or Morris Township pool or a gas station or whatever it's gonna be? I don't know, I think it's fair, I think that's the way it's, it's worked out. I think the finance committee and Sal or Nancy and Sal have worked this out. And I think that that's, you know, it's a compromise on both sides, right? It's a compromise from rec, it's a compromise from the council originally. Maybe somewhere, you know, maybe not in the middle, but I think it's a compromise on both sides.
The camps, I think, I think we talked about this earlier, Mayor, that the camp in Morris Township is longer day. So it's not really the same, you know, these kids are gonna have to head off. They work in the morning, then they're three o'clock early. So the prices that they get there are a little bit, I guess, different. It's a full, it's a different job. And also, you know, the quick check is a different job. I know my boys, they wanted to be outside in the morning playing with the kids. They didn't want to be a quick check or, you know, ice shopper. So it was a job that they wanted and they also got money for it.
That's what I mean, they're coming here because they want to be here.
Wouldn't you want them to get minimum wage?
I was happy that they were, wanted to work. And it was their first job and that someone would hire them with no experience, take a shot, you know, take a chance on my kid. I was happy with that.
You're teaching a first-year kid what to do, right? Your councilor what to do.
Be on time.
Be on time. You know, it's responsibility, it's not only about the money, it's responsibility, it's what they're learning from. It's being in charge of other kids or watching other kids, you know? I mean, there's a price to that as well, right? So, but it's fairly fair.
So your comment before about, you know, fourteen-year-old, fifteen, fourteen-year-old kids, right? So a fourth-year counselor is not fifteen. A fourth-year counselor is nineteen, eighteen, nineteen years old. They have carpet, they have car payments, they have other things they have to pay for. And here we're, are we looking at the council final number or the four three twenty-five rec number? Which number are we looking at? The yellow column?
Nancy?
That's what was approved. Mike, Sal and I spoke this week and we are proposing at least what the rec proposed. So the column to the rec.
The yellow.
Well, if you guys are in agreement, then that's, that sounds like it's done deal.
So you're saying for a fourth-year counselor, you're saying sixteen dollars and twenty cents an hour?
Correct.
So we're saying less than a dollar over minimum wage?
Well, we're saying at least that because we face, we face.
Folks, how much can you get out of the well here?
Pushback from rec about the people taking care of our children and not paying them enough. And but at least me and my uncomfortable decision.
There is making twenty dollars or whatever.
I mean, we just approved the part-time custodial billing maintenance person, twenty-five dollars an hour.
Right.
And they're not looking after our kids, right? And so we're gonna, we're gonna give somebody a counselor less than minimum wage to look after our kids? I don't see how that makes sense.
Nobody wanted to clean the other bathrooms. Try to get somebody with eighteen dollars.
I'm being serious. Like they, they, you know, they're doing an important job. But I'm not, I'm not saying that the job of a custodian is important, but to pay them twenty-five dollars an hour and then to pay the counselors less than that? It just doesn't make sense to me, I don't get it.
Yes, I mean, it's not a good job.
Well, I, I think, I think it's a, you know, in this day and age, it's bare minimum needs to be standard minimum wage.
All right, we've gone over this now a hundred times now, so what's the number gonna be here, folks?
It sounds like the majority wants it to be something, whatever.
Oh, that's an older one.
No, that's not good. So, I mean, I'm hearing that there was pressure and some type of making you feel uncomfortable and et cetera. I think part of our job as council members is to make good decisions for everybody in the borough and that means our seniors who are subsidizing the programs as well. I don't want to argue about fifty cents or whether these kids are worth minimum wage or whatever, but I do think that we are going to make decisions that not everybody likes. And they're gonna try to pressure us. And every employee here wants more money. Every employee in this borough wants more money, everyone. And so are we going to give them all more money because they make us feel bad?
Talking about minimum wage.
We're doing tax, like it's funded through the program, right?
Well, if this is.
That's a death suit.
I mean, I don't know. You tell me.
I read the email again, that's, those are twenty twenty-four actuals because those are from, she polled all the vouchers and put it in that spreadsheet. So those are actuals that I use to base all of this.
So last year, we paid them less and this came out negative?
Yes, they raised the camp fees this year.
Okay.
And that is where the additional revenue.
I don't have that.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Okay, so, no, nobody else has that?
Well, that was in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, but you raised the camp fees, but you still have other expenses, you.
They're not, they're talking about just this.
Others, I mean.
You raised camp fees, but that's not the only thing that gets figured into the raise of a camp fee, right?
Yes, I have labor and non-labor.
Yeah, but there's supplies, there's.
That's non-labor, I asked for those.
So what number are y'all, on this sheet, what number are we all proposing here? The rec-proposed numbers?
Yes, four three twenty-five.
Like as I said, the memo that they sent us said that the council-approved number was what they wanted to go with, so I didn't know what that was.
It also says that.
This at the bottom urges us to review the current pay structure and take steps toward a more competitive and fair compensation.
Right, it also says that when we reach out to follow up, the typical answer of lifeguards is that they've received a better offer elsewhere.
But have you talked to lifeguards? Have you talked to the lifeguard? I mean, that's one side of the story too.
Right, but if you're going based on what the people that work there, that do this job, which is, you know, that's the information I'm taking, they're saying that retention is difficult.
That's one side of the story, right? So.
Well, what's the other side?
There's always three sides, right?
What are the other two sides? What am I not seeing?
We're only seeing one side of the story. Of course, like Nancy just said, everybody wants more money. Of course they want more money. Maybe one or two of them did leave, but they had a full staff. They were able to staff everything.
I'm not talking about.
They staffed, they staffed the.
They staffed, they staffed the summer camp, they staffed rec, they staffed the swimming guards, the lifeguards. They staffed, they staffed the snack bar.
Sure.
They weren't short.
Sure, they did it last year, but what they're saying is that they need to offer, what I'm reading here is that they need to offer more competitive rates simply to keep those people.
We're going around in a circle, right? So people, you got to narrow down what you're going to decide on here.
Sal, Sal, you're the liaison. So I met with you. I thought we were on the same page. What is your proposal?
Nancy, for the first time, I'm having, we're talking about, by the way, on 50 cents, we're talking $7.50 a week, $7 a week. On 15 hours, 50 cents is that much. Everybody can say that they're right, because you can argue this to the end. To make, to make, to make your point is that these are kids getting their first job and they're happy to be working.
Yeah, we've heard.
Happy to be working. To Bill's point, you know, I see it, but you're still talking about 14-year-olds. So I'm, you know, I'm coming from rec. So I seen, I seen a lot of this and it eventually does get filled. I mean, people are, people are, well, rec always wants a little bit more because they, they always feel that, like with lifeguards, what came up last week was they're having a little harder time getting second and third-year experience lifeguards. They're getting first-year experience. So they're, before you'd say like you have 10% first year, 30% second year, whatever, 30, 30, 30, however you want to do that. That's not happening that much as of last week, according to recreation. A lot of the second and third years aren't coming back and we're having more percentage of the first years. So.
So let's raise those up. Let's give them a bigger increase for second and third.
This is going to be another 1:00 AM meeting. I hope not. But we're talking smaller.
Tell us what you want, Sal.
Um. Well, my committee has, has the yellow numbers, the next to the numbers, 2024.
All right.
The 4325 rec.
The four, I meant April.
Yeah. Okay, so 432025 is what we're going with here? For what, for which year?
The column there, the whole 4325.
All the way down?
Yeah.
And even the head pool, the pool director, you talked about all of those people?
The salaries, the salaries, I have a real problem with because we gave everybody the same percentage increase last year. Now we're going to make an exception for salary of 40. That, that would have repercussions across the borough that, you know, I don't think, I don't think that would be fair.
Yeah, I'm more looking at the top for the council.
Yeah, keep that 3%. But you and I talked about them.
This, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm essentially specifically right, the top.
So just the top, the camp council. One, two, three, four, five, six.
And the pool employees.
What?
Just not the pool.
Just the lifeguards and snack stands.
Right.
Not the sal, not the directors. There should be counselors and lifeguards, what we're talking about.
What about the summer employee salary? The camp director, no, right?
No, those would be the 3% then.
And then the last four, five on the bottom? No. Is that correct?
3%.
Yeah, that would, that would fall under the council final though.
So the first, up to EMT counselor, that's 1720, is that correct? Those, those, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Plus the adult counselor.
Yeah, but that didn't change.
Okay, so that stays the same. Okay, so all of these here, those are them. The summer employee salary rate is the last, the last column?
Yes, it is.
And the rest of these positions are?
Snack stand lifeguard would be the 4325.
Okay, all right. And then the pool employee salary rates are the final column?
Yes, the 3%.
Is there a reason the swim team, swim team coach went down from 4201 to 4141?
That might be a typo.
Because I'm not on board with that.
If that's.
It's a typo, you know?
Wait, do we do, is it 2, is it 3%?
It's everyone else that looks like went up 3% except for the swim team coach. So if that goes up.
What's that salary? Do you have a salary that, I think, because this is a typo here, so.
It was 40, 4,020 in 2020.
Okay, so then the 4140 is correct.
Yes, 4140 is correct.
That's correct. That's 3%.
This is 4020, not 40.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So it's the final column on all of those things, is that right?
We're going by that.
So how do, how do we put this on here then?
What do we disagree with? I don't understand.
So I think the overall consensus is the first, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people, seven lines are 4325.
The hourly, basically all the hourly.
Yeah, all the hourly's.
The camp director is the final, is the last column. The pool employee salary rates are the 4325. And then the pool employee salary rates are the final council final.
All right, yeah, I just, for the record, I don't, I don't agree with those rates.
Well, you can vote yes or vote no or abstain, whichever. So whichever you've gotten, everybody understands, so.
And you ran the numbers with what we just discussed?
Uh, yeah, I actually did it, worst case scenario, 4325 all the way down.
Okay.
Want to do a resolution tonight or is that, was that?
It'd be nice to do it tonight because they're asking how much they're going to get paid and rec can't give them an answer. I'm sorry.
Are you able to do this tonight or not? I hate doing this because this is a mistake, maybe we'll move to the next part.
Well, the next meeting is.
I understand. All right, so we're doing this column, what you circled is what we, what we've done. But they're doing all the salaries now, the interviews, and they don't know what to tell them.
They already have them hired. If you look at that, look at that second page.
Yeah, so are these offers that are going out?
Yeah, those people are hired. That came from Chrissy from the pool.
So they're already hired?
They're already hired. They just don't know what salaries.
They must really be concerned about it. They're making them a wage, so I'd be very, they're not.
I saw a name somewhere. Oh, they're there.
It's the last one, it's the last.
Oh, the letter, okay.
We have 45 employees are waiting.
So with this letter that they submitted here?
The one from Chrissy and?
Yes, they don't, they don't submit what they, what they're recommending for salaries. Is that because they're going on the 4325? So that's what they're, so this letter says, we hope the council approves, or they say no, we need to approve more.
Bill, from my thing with them is they always feel that they have to go up because they do comparative with Morris Township and everybody else. That's all I can, I can say. I mean, the letter speaks for itself. Our residents love to see familiar faces when they arrive at the facility.
You know, I get it, but the letter says that they have retention problems. They, this is their, this year is their lowest year yet. With only four lifeguards reaching a third-year plus bracket. So retention's a problem.
Basically, they're every year, just saying. I'm just.
Every year. Why is, I understand. But why are they saying that? Because we're paying them a very nominal fee. That's why they keep leaving. I'm going to guess, I'm going to say that's why.
Okay, but this is how, this is where the majority of the council is right now. Everybody can vote yes or no and we'll decide it there.
But at least, Bill, this does increase it from where it was. So we figure that's, you know, if we both know it stays where it is. I'm just saying at least if we can get it higher, they're getting more than they were going to get.
And I'm just saying that my son had an opportunity to go $50 an hour, $15.49 an hour. I'm going to tell him to go get the $15.49 an hour job. More money.
Yeah.
I think that's for seven bucks, you know, whatever.
Seven bucks.
Let's, John, let's, let's move this on. All right, so we can.
All right, the following is a resolution of Borough of Morris Plains setting forth to 2025 recreation summer employment hourly and salary rates. Whereas at its May 1st, 2025 public meeting, the Borough Council of Borough Morris Plains discussed and deliberated upon what the council would believe would be the appropriate 2025 recreation summer employment hourly rates. And whereas after significant discussion and deliberation, the Borough Council of Borough Morris Plains resolves as follows. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council, Borough Morris Plains County of Morris State of New Jersey, that these 2025 recreation summer employment hourly rates shall be as follows. For first-year counselor, $15 an hour. For a second-year counselor, $15.50 an hour. For a third-year counselor, $15.75 an hour. For a fourth-year counselor, $16.20 an hour. For a senior counselor, $17.20 an hour. For an EMT counselor, $17.20 an hour. And for an adult counselor, $24 an hour. Two, that the rate for the summer employee salary rates shall be $8,874. Three, the 2025 pool employee salary rate shall be, for snack stand, $15 an hour. For first-year lifeguard, $17 an hour. For second-year lifeguard, $17.50 an hour. And for third-year lifeguard, $18 an hour. And four, the 2025 pool employees' salary rates shall be, for a head pool director, $9,975. For a pool director, $9,975. For a snack bar director, number one, $1,761. For a snack bar director, two, $1,761. And then for a swim team coach, $4,141. Anybody like to move that resolution as set forth?
I moved that resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nancy. Roll call please.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Brum.
Yes.
Mr. Houston.
Steve.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Puntier.
Yes.
Ms. Verda.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. We have no new business. We do have vouchers. Ms. Urban?
I move that the checklist dated May 1st, 2025, in the amount of $3,585,852.91
Is there a second? Second by Art. Roll call please.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Brum.
Yes.
Mr. Houston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Puntier.
Yes.
Yes.
We do need a short executive session. Mr. Cortez.
This night of the meeting is over.
It'll be quick.
Resolution number 2025-64, be resolved by the Borough Council of Borough Morris Plains on the first day of May 2025. The mayor and the Borough Council shall meet in executive session from which the public shall be excluded to discuss matters as permitted pursuant to NJSA 10 semi-colon 4-12. Subsections?
Seven.
Seven. The timing of matter to discuss pursuant to paragraph one hereof can be disclosed to the public is as soon as practicable after the final resolution of the aforementioned matter.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. You'll excuse us for an executive session. We will be returning. So you ran, but you're more than welcome to move.
Don't kill yourself, Bill. Sorry. What, do you need a light over there, Bill?
I'm sorry, I do.